I just spent the last hour getting caught up Jeremy on the last planning board meeting that I missed, so.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Nice thing about, nice thing about recording these.
Yeah, no, it was a great discussion. It really helped me a lot, so it's good.
I just spent the last hour getting caught up Jeremy on the last planning board meeting that I missed, so.
I just spent the last hour.
All right, everyone there?
Yeah, I had an audio problem there for a second.
I know, that was my, it might have been me.
That was the YouTube.
It was.
Delay.
It was.
But I think I had my, I had my speakers on, so something.
All right, five o'clock Ethan, I've got no one else looking to come into this meeting, but I'm, I will continue to monitor that.
Okay.
Start the meeting and then obviously we're going to need to just talk about what a quorum is tonight and that we do have a quorum Ethan, just pointing that out to you, okay?
Yeah.
Three members is a quorum. Normally during a planning board hearing, if you only had three members, we would let the applicant know that they had the opportunity to move to the next meeting where there's a full member, full board, but no need for that tonight.
Okay.
Okay.
Are we live and moving?
We are live and moving.
Okay, this is the August 5th meeting of the planning board for the town of Camden. On the agenda tonight, we have a open, open spaces amendment in the zoning ordinance. And first, we're going to want to take a look at a couple of business items that we have to deal with. Jeremy will discuss the process for a Zoom meeting in case anybody's out there. And then we'll go on to public comments on non-agenda items. Jeremy, you have the floor.
All right, thank you. Welcome, everyone. I just admitted Mark Ratner. I will continue to monitor to see if anyone tries to join. Thus far, right now, it's just the, you got three planning board members, myself, Jeannie, Caitlin Thompson, who's out there, she's doing minutes for us, and Mark Ratner, select board. Know what you call yourself, select board to the planning board, so.
Liaison.
Liaison, there, good word, thank you. All right, so just to start here, the Camden Planning Board has been meeting remotely since the pandemic started. We've continued to do that. We encourage everyone to provide comments ahead of time by email. There are, people are also able to watch the meeting on YouTube. People are able to email me, call me, and, and provide comments moving forward. And I will say, from my perspective, had a, you know, we've had a lot of planning board meetings via Zoom, and I frankly think they've worked out pretty well. The Lyman Morse one, which was a complicated project, that was done remotely. Successfully took a lot of public comment, I think, and I just wanted to point that out because the next item that we have on the, before we get to that, we'll have public, public comments. So you want to go to public comments on non-agenda items, and then I can jump back into where I was going, Ethan?
Sure. The next item on the agenda is public comments on non-agenda items. Wondering if we have any comments from anyone, public or board members?
On non-agenda items.
I have a procedural question, Ethan.
Sure, Andy.
So I'm an alternate, right? Does something need to happen tonight?
Yeah, we're going to need to appoint you as a sitting member.
Okay.
And then as Jeremy and Jeannie have indicated, we're going to also need to talk, just mention for the, I think for the record, that three sitting members is a quorum for purposes of the planning board voting.
Correct.
It is a skeleton crew, but we'll talk about that also.
And Andrew, I would like to just let you know, next select board meeting, next Tuesday, I believe you're on the agenda. Appointment of planning board members, re-upping them is on the agenda. And I believe that they are recommending that you become a full member to the board.
Okay.
Based on the discussion that you guys all had the last time, okay?
Okay.
Sounds good. So I think one of the things, it's a non, is it on the agenda, Jeremy, the, the, the online meeting?
Yeah, it is, but before we.
Is this the time to do that, or?
I think right now is the time to just say who, who are the voting members tonight, and that you guys have a quorum.
Okay, so do we first need to make a motion to appoint Andy, or is that something I can just do as a chair?
Why don't we just take a motion? Maybe Mark can make a motion on that? Sorry, Mark.
If he's willing.
Sorry about that. Okay, I'll make a motion to.
Maybe two with, two in one, how's that?
Designate Andy as a voting participant in this meeting.
And then we have a quorum.
Which would make a quorum.
Correct.
I'll, I'll second.
Perfect.
So we'll take a roll call vote on that. Mr. Segenthaler. And I, for me, that's two. And Andy, you are now appointed as a voting member. And as Mark has indicated, our understanding is that three seated members is going to qualify as a quorum. And we are going to get into more specifics, and we can bring that into the record, I believe, but just for the sake of easing any public concern, the other planning board members have participated and/or been involved in this discussion, the ones who are absent and seem to be generally in support of the ordinance to suffer discussion.
I just have a point of reference. I don't think you need a motion to bring the alternate in as a voting member. And if you did, you couldn't because you only have two people to vote.
That's what I was starting to think. I was like, wait, how do we do that? So thank you, Mark, for the clarification. I think it's just something the, the chair can appoint, is that right? And then.
I believe, in, in watching meetings over the years, I believe that the, the alternate, alternate was just, it's automatically a voting member.
I think you could ask if anyone had any objections, and then once you were listening to all those, then you could go forward.
Thank you, Jeannie. Okay, so all that non-essential, essential business taken care of. In the end result is that Andy is now sitting as a voting member, but thank you, Mark. Okay, so then I guess we have no comments on non-agenda items that I've seen. Jeremy, you have nothing on your end?
No, sir.
Okay, so before we start the public hearing on the proposed zoning ordinance amendments, do we want to discuss the, the online meeting policy, Jeremy, that we need to take care of that later?
Yeah, no, we need to take care of that first.
That's what I thought.
Yep, and so let me see if I can share my screen. Hold on.
This is a, this is a hearing.
Correct, and I need you to notify that, let everyone know that this is a public hearing, Ethan, on this item.
Okay.
Everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, perfect, thank you.
Yeah, so the late arriving agenda includes the, the board remote meeting policy, and so we will open a public hearing with a motion, that's not on a motion, that's just something I do, so we'll open a public hearing on the remote meeting policy, and then I will turn the floor over to Jeremy.
All right, perfect, thank you. And I just want everyone to know what, what's behind this is while, while the COVID crisis was, when we were under a state of emergency in the state of Maine declared by the governor, boards and elected bodies were able to conduct meetings remotely. When the governor rescinded that emergency declaration, the ability to meet remotely went away. However, they, the legislature did pass a state, a law on allowing remote meetings. And so we need to adopt a remote meeting policy. And I'm, I'm proposing, and I mean, the board has talked about this many times, about the desire to keep these meetings remote. At least, at least now, we have two members that are in and out of, out of either the country or the state, either on work or for whatever reason. And so what I have drafted, and the town attorney has reviewed, and I'll go to it right here, is what we're calling the planning board policy for conducting meetings remotely.
For reference, it is a part of the packet as well that was circulated by Janice and was posted on the website.
Correct. And I will, yeah, I guess I'll mention when, when the comment period comes, but so I can go through it very quickly. Where a state law enables municipal boards to meet remotely under certain circumstances, following certain requirements, the town of Camden's planning board's policy for meeting, meeting remotely shall be as follows and is effective for the next 60 days or until repealed by the planning board, and this is the state law that regulates this, governs this, is one main revised statutes, 403B, 2B1. And so the policy that I've drafted is planning board members are expected to be present, and just so you know, I mean, this is all based again on that statute, and so the way I crafted this, along with Bill Kelly, complies with the stat, the statutory requirements for remote meetings. And so from the effective date of this, okay, let me start from the beginning there, planning board members are expected to be present in person, except during the period covered by this policy, as at least two members will either be out of the country or out of the state during this effective period. And there is an urgent need due to the increased surge of the Delta variant of COVID-19 virus in the midcoast, and I would add now statewide. It appears masking requirements are now in effect in Arustic County, Kennebec County, Waldo County, Lincoln County, Cumberland County, et cetera. So from the effective date of this policy, the planning board will meet via the Zoom platform. The meetings will be noticed as required under normal state law and local requirements. As the meeting is held remotely, interested individuals shall be provided the Zoom link to the meeting and can also watch the meeting on the town's YouTube channel. Since the beginning of the COVID pandemic, the town has encouraged interested individuals to provide comments by email and continues to do so, and they will also be allowed to participate via remote video and audio. Emails will be, emails will be accepted up until the closing of any public hearing. Just so you know, Ethan and Andy and Mark, I added this to this, our procedures, so that while I'm during the, while I'm kind of managing these meetings, I will also be checking my emails during the public comment period, because I think it's important to make sure the public has an ample opportunity to provide comment during the meeting. So if they're watching this on YouTube, they're watching it on Zoom, however, whatever, but they want to email me because emailing may be an easy way to do it because they've got their phone, they can email me up through the end of the public comment period at my email address, and I'll read those public comments to the board. Continuing on, all pertinent documents, plans, or records for the meeting are available on the town's website and will be available upon written or telephonic request to myself. Again, the public may participate by the Zoom platform. To obtain the Zoom link, the public should email or call the planning, myself at the above-mentioned email or phone number, and the link will be sent. I will, will add Zoom bombing was an issue early on during Zoom. I don't know if people are aware of that. I was, early on, I was involved in a lot of meetings that were run by the state that got Zoom hacked, and it was quite atrocious. That appears to have waned, so what we now have is we have the Zoom, this Zoom link is available on the town's website on the planning board agenda. If you go to the calendar, so this Zoom link is available freely to people. They don't have to necessarily reach out to me. Public comment, which is the key to a public hearing, will be taken via email, phone, or via the Zoom link. Comments will be taken up until the closing of the public hearing. Zoom platform allows for an effective means of communication between the planning board and the public. Now, that's the type of phrase comes from the statute, right? You can imagine, Ethan, I'm sure you understand. If there's an individual that requires a reasonable accommodation, because they're disabled, please contact me at the above email or phone number, and I'll, I'll work to provide reasonable accommodation. All votes conducted by the planning board must be taken by a roll call vote, and all documents considered by the board will be made available to the public on the town's website and can be emailed to interested parties upon request. That is the gist of our public, the planning board policy for conducting remote meetings. I saw a typo in there earlier, and I'll fix that. I don't remember exactly where it was, but there was a typo. I'll fix that. So I guess right now you guys can discuss or open up the public comment and then close the public comment and then discuss and then maybe open it up again for public comment if we have any, and then take a vote on it.
Yeah, I think the first step is to open it up now for public comment, so.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop sharing for now, so that I can do some other things and go check my emails, okay?
Sure. I'm going to open it up then for a public comment. And Jeremy, let me know if you get anything on either the YouTube channel or on the Zoom link. Or on email. Those are the only ways. Anybody else? Mark, I guess you qualify as part of the public. Do you have any questions? Jeremy, no comments anywhere?
No comments anywhere.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment period and then open it up for board discussion. From my part, I'll just say real quickly, I'm in support of this amendment, or this, this policy for the near term, given the Delta variant and everything else, and also really as a board, we want and, and want to encourage public comment, and hopefully the means that we provided are sufficient, and if anybody has an issue with that, please do, Jeremy or I know, and we'll try to work with it. Go ahead, Andy.
Yeah, there was a, a comment emailed earlier, I saw. We have an obligation.
I think that's on the open spaces, I believe. Was that?
Correct. I did not.
Oh, okay, okay.
I said, no public comment on this period, on this piece.
Yeah, so that's in the next piece. Anyone else? I'm guessing no, so with no need then to really any board discussion. We're on that part, so I think I'm going to just go ahead and call a roll call vote on this. And get approval on this one. So Mark Segenthaler in favor of this policy for remote meetings?
For the next 60 days.
For the 60 days, yes.
Yeah, okay, thanks, Mark. And Andy?
Yes.
Yep, and it's a yes for me, so that's a three, zero.
Was that a motion?
Who's my motion person tonight? We got, Chris is not here. I'm not going to do all the talking. Is it Mark or is it Andy?
I'll make the motion to accept the planning board policy for conducting meetings remotely.
I'll second it.
Oh, great, here we go. So now we're rolling, and I'll take a roll call vote again, upon attended. Mark? Yep.
Yes.
Andy?
Hi.
And Ethan, yep. Okay, that's three, zero, so the policy is approved and accepted by the planning board. And that allows us now to move on to the second item on the agenda, which, as we all know, is the the hearing on the proposed zoning ordinance amendments to amend Article 9, open space zoning, and as with most of these things, I'm going to turn it over to Jeremy first. Opening the public hearing and have Jeremy give a quick description of what we're doing and the changes that we're looking at.
Perfect, thank you. And I will say, still nobody I'm wanting to get into this meeting. I am monitoring that while I'm doing this, so. All right, the proposal before you is to amend Article 9, open space zoning, Section 2 applicability, Section 3 general standards, subsection 1 within the rural, rural 1 district, subsection 2 within the rural 2 district, and subsection 3 within the coastal residential district. And I would add, the purpose of the amendments is to revise the standards for some rural subdivisions by applying updated planning strategies developed to provide for more flexible and more affordable open space development. The changes are intended for new opportunities to create additional housing in town. They do not provide for increase. I will say, there's a kind of, it's kind of, you read this, I'm taking this from the agenda. They do not provide for any, any increase in the overall total of dwelling units permitted under the current ordinance. I think what that is intended to say, what is permitted under the underlying zoning, which would be the standard RU1 or RU2 or CR district zoning. And I would say, maybe I'll just read, read something to the, into the record here, Ethan, just to kind of give it a little more oomph and detail. I think we had a very robust and thoughtful discussion on July 15th about this. I think every planning board member was in full support of it, that was in attendance. And I just say that the stated purpose of this article of Article 9, open space zoning, within rural areas of Camden, this is in quotes, within rural areas of Camden, to maintain the rural, natural, and scenic qualities of the town, and within developing areas to provide for flexibility in the design of open space residential development. I would add that it's my professional opinion that the proposed amendments would be consistent with, continue to be consistent with that stated purpose. The article is, is the only mechanism that allows for cluster-type development or planned unit developments in town. The ordinance is mandatory in the RU1, RU2, and CR districts currently, and optional in the village and village extension. We had talked about just amending it, and I had, I think, I think Mark Segenthaler brought up that maybe we really ought to just make this optional, as I recall. So, and Andy just nodded his head, and Andy watched the video, I think, just an hour or so ago, so. I would add that as the town looks to address housing availability and affordability, it's imperative to look at zoning and land use controls that may be impeding housing development. Although the proposed changes could facilitate, and I'm saying this because I have taken some phone calls about this, that we're doing this for a specific project, and that would be the Sagamore Farm property in Midcoast Co-Housing. And I just want to just, although these changes could facilitate that project, Midcoast Co-Housing, and Realty Resources projects that were submitted in response to the RFI that was issued last year for Sagamore Farm property, these changes would also facilitate other residential developments and subdivisions throughout town. This is not just specific, this is not spot zoning, this is not specific to a certain property, we're not doing it for that one sole reason. I've heard from a number of consultants and developers and realtors as well about the burdensome standards in Article 9 that limit residential development in town. When you look at housing, the housing crisis that hit, that has hit the midcoast, there are three, from my perspective, and I think everyone agrees, three major factors driving up those costs. That's the cost of labor, the cost of materials, and the cost of land. In order to do a standard three-lot subdivision, and this is an example, in the RU1 zoning district, under the current open space requirements in town, a developer would need 21 acres to do a three-lot subdivision in the RU1. From my perspective, this requirement's overly burdensome requirement and significantly drives up development costs, thereby negatively impacting market marketability and availability, or even the possibility of housing to be developed in town. The clustering of housing component allowed in Article 9 is the big benefit. And the big, I think that's the, the real, you know, that's what this zoning, open space zoning does allow. It provides that clustering that we don't allow anywhere else. So if you want to do a cluster development, and I say this because we're, if we're talking about optional or mandatory, if someone wants to do a standard subdivision, three lots on a road, because they have, you know, eight acres up on Barnstown Road or something, and they're not doing a cluster development, but they want to do a regular three-lot subdivision, they don't need to do this. But if someone wants to do a planned group development type or a cluster housing project, they need to go through the open space process. Where was I? Sorry, I, let me, let me just get back here. Clustering, which is allowed, and that includes cooperatives and condos, they provide many benefits to developers and residents for the housing availability and affordability by reducing site infrastructure costs. Infrastructure and site costs are considerable costs that negatively impact housing marketability and development opportunities. The proposed amendments will not only make Article 9 optional in the, in the zones that it applies, it would reduce the number of acres per dwelling unit needed. For instance, in the RU1, currently seven acres per dwelling units required, and the changes proposed would reduce that underlying, to the underlying zone, zoning requirement of 60,000 square feet per dwelling unit. In the RU2, that would go from four acres to the 60,000 square feet per dwelling unit. And again, from the, I, I believe that the seven and four acre per unit standard is incredibly burdensome and costly for developers. If a developer chose to use the proposed ordinance amendments, they would still be required to have at least 60% of the parcel remain as open space, and I think that's, that's key to this. This is not a, you know, the whole idea of open space going away doesn't go away. They're still required to preserve of that lot, open space 60%. That remains. It's also important to note that a property owner currently could, under the current requirement, split off lots without subdivision approval, as allowed under state and local laws, without preserving any green space or open space at all, and have lot meets the current, meet the current 60,000 square foot minimum lot size requirement. I just bring that to your attention, because if someone wants to go through a process and do three lots today in the RU1, they need 21 acres, but if I want to do three lots over, say, 15 years, I only have to do 60,000 square feet per lot. So just pointing that out. In essence, the town has a minimum lot size requirement in the RU1 of seven acres, and in the RU2 of four acres per dwelling unit under the requirements of Article 9, if someone wants to develop a subdivision or a cluster-type development. Large lot zoning, vis a vis open space requirements, significantly increases the cost of housing, adversely affects people other than the existing lot owners, exacerbates social segregation, and harms the environment by spurring sprawl. In a time when planners, housing advocates, and developers are advocating for increased housing density, it's important for communities to look at their zoning requirements to determine what might be limiting housing development. Based on my discussions with planning consultants and developers and realtors, to name a few, addressing large lot zoning is critical to limiting sprawl, increasing density, and reducing the cost of developing housing. I thought we had a thoughtful discussion last week, or two weeks ago, whatever it was. I can just go through, I have like six bulleted points, what these changes do. They would make open space optional in RU1, RU2, and the CR. They make it clear that condominiums and cooperatives are allowed and required to comply with open space zoning if they want to do a cluster or planned group development. They reduce the lot size per dwelling unit to the standard for the underlying zone of 60,000 square feet. It clarifies how to define open space, and it maintains the existing requirement of 60% of parcel to remain as open space, reduces the frontage requirement for cluster developments to be consistent with the existing open space requirements of 75 feet. And it clarifies that the distance between principal buildings would be that of the underlying zoning requirements and directed by the building code as well. Currently, in just in the, in these zones, primary structures need to be separated by 30 feet. That's what this would do. The current standard talks about the height of the building, plus this and that, might as well just use the existing standard. There are building codes that address it as well. The building code allows buildings to get closer than 30 feet, but in ours, existing underlying zoning says that primary structures need to be 30 feet apart. That's not changing. Those are the, in essence, those are the only changes proposed in the ordinance. There's my summary, Ethan.
Sounded more like a sales pitch.
Well, maybe take it as a sales pitch.
At least take a breath for a minute, Jeremy. There's a lot of information. Yeah, and not bad. Okay, so it's time now to open this up to the public, to open the public hearing to public comment. And going to check with Jeremy and see if we have any public comment. I know we have one letter, one email that came in, and I'll be happy to read that into the record, just to give Jeremy a quick break.
Hey, Ethan, Ethan, let me just mention, I did talk to her at great length, and so I think the gist that she would like to share with you is the last paragraph. Right? When it talks about the planning board, I would ask that the planning board.
Here, I, I would suggest it's probably not appropriate to edit what, what she has said.
I'm just going to, I'm just going to read what she said into the record, and then we can have a discussion, and we can go to you as well. This is public comment that was received by the board. So it came from Kristen Smith, and she's at 6 C Street in Camden. And she, she writes, "I have a question about the proposal to change the provisions of Article 9 from mandatory to optional. If the open space zoning requirements are listed, are optional, why even have them in the first place? Section 1 states the purpose of this article is, within rural areas of Camden, to maintain the rural." To maintain the rural, natural and scenic qualities of the town. And within developing areas to provide for flexibility in the design of open space residential develop. And yet the proposed change makes this optional, which will. The proposed change to make this optional will contradict the whole purpose of Article nine, open space zoning. The Rural one and Rural two districts will no longer be maintained as rural. Rural districts include lands with multiple natural resource constraints. And or that are especially important to their recreational scenic and other resource based opportunities, including farming and woodlands. And or that are especially important for long term protection of water quality. If we make it optional to follow open space zoning provisions, there will be negative impacts on our community. Are these changes being proposed because of the Sagamore Farm property? If so, it is worrisome to me that the town wants to push through a project for high density housing that is not allowed under current zoning. And is trying to alter zoning regist regulations to fit a specific project. The Sagamore Farm property has been under discussion for forty plus years, first being looked at for a business park and now for affordable housing. Why can't the property be developed in a way that meets current zoning? I would ask the planning board to seriously consider not changing the wording of Article nine, open space zoning from mandatory to optional. And I would hope that the proposed changes in lot size and frontage are examined to see if they are good for the community as a whole. Or if they are just being altered for one project. And again, that's from Kristen Smith, Six C Street in Camden. Um, Jeremy, do we have any other public comment?
I, no other public comment I had, well, I, I did get an email from Joe Cludier. Um, Joe Cludier does live in Camden, um, he is a developer. Um, and I, I, I would include it in the record, however, and, and I, I guess I can do that. The email, it was talking about affordable housing. And what the town can do to, to help address affordable housing issues. His comments initially were not relevant to the open space piece necessarily. Um, however, and then I reached back out to him saying, yeah, I appreciate that and we'll certainly look at some of those that you're, you know, you, that you've. That he's mentioned, um, but I asked about whether or not he supported these changes. And he, in fact, he did say, yes, he supported those changes, um, and I can, we should just add that to the record.
Yeah, but this is, this is, I mean, has he? Is that part of this meeting, or are you, are you just like, you, you know?
No, that was an email, that was an email about, about the open space, about affordable housing in open space. And he commented to me about affordable housing, things that we could do that were not addressed in this ordinance. And I reached back out to him and I said, I understand that and I appreciate that. What are your thoughts about this open space, these open space changes to get the lot sizes down? In order to, you know, get number of units, and he said, I support those changes, yes. Does that help answer your question, Mark?
Well, not really, I mean, this is a public hearing and we're looking for public comments, so you're just, you, you know.
Yes.
You made a lot of statements that, that Joe Cludier said this and realtors say this and so and so says this. But, y- you know, the third hand, I mean, it's like a salesman saying, you know, this is the latest and greatest and, and. You know, we're looking for real facts.
Okay, can I read, I will read then into the record. Um, and I, I can include this whole, I mean, he, there's a whole host of things. And he knew that this meeting was happening, um, Mark. And he replied to me, it, because the subject was planning board meeting on new zoning. And be- because of family commitments, I can't participate in the Zoom meeting this Thursday, but wanted to provide some insight. As you know, I've been involved with affordable housing since nineteen seventy six and continue today to be very involved. There are three impediments to affordable housing. First is the cost of land. Typically, we cannot do anything about that unless we are dealing with a special circumstance such as a land trust or town with tax acquired property. Second, and more importantly, is zoning that doesn't facilitate affordable housing. Camden zoning makes it impossible to build affordable housing. Last year, we looked for land in Camden to build an affordable housing project. We found land to buy, but the low density zoning and lot sizes made it impossible to make the project feasible. We went to Belfast, we, where we found zoning to be much more fail- favorable and will finish the project this fall. To build affordable housing, you need to have high density for lot sizes and units. For example, in Rockport, some of the vote zones have twelve thousand square foot minimums if on sewer. However, there are other zoning requirements that need to be relaxed to facilitate affordable housing, such as minimum frontage on roads. Road specifications, parking requirements, connection fees to sewer and water. We have used tax increment financing in many places to make affordable housing work. In Massachusetts, we have used with success a zoning tool called an affordable housing overlay zone. This is a zone spec- specially crafted to facilitate affordable housing. It has the tools I listed above and can flow into any zone to make affordable housing feasible. I would encourage you to craft such a zone and this will certainly make affordable housing more likely. The final challenge is the cost of materials and labor to build affordable housing. In the mid coast contractors are exceedingly busy, already building materials are at a fifteen year high, but are coming down now. We in this business need to be creative and proactive, manufactured housing can all, can possibly be used when properly designed. We are evaluating using three D printed technology for printing houses out of concrete. Our analysis so far is very encouraging. I wish you the best of luck in this, affordable housing is critically needed everywhere, but especially in the mid coast. I stand ready to provide input based on our experience over the last forty five years. And I said, um, thanks for your comments, Joe. There is a public comment, public hearing on proposed changes to Article nine open space zoning. The proposed changes are in the planning board packet that is on the town's calendar. I would ask that you could, I would ask if you could please review those and provide comments as it specifically relates to open space zoning. The plan is to make open space zoning requirements optional in the RU one, RU two and CR and to reduce lot size per dwelling units. From seven acres per unit in the RU one to the underlying zoning requirements of sixty thousand per dwelling unit. And RU two to forty thou, um, from forty to, to sixty thousand, from four, sorry. Um, and then he responded, this will not solve the problem the town's zoning faces with affordable housing. I said, Joe, I'm trying to understand your comments, these changes are not solely about affordable housing. Um, these changes would facilitate mid coast co-housing project and others. Presently, the open space zoning RU one, RU two, CR are mandatory for subdivisions. And the seven acres per unit that you talk about lot size. In the RU one is a killer for most all projects, we are proposing to make open space optional and get down. Get down to the underlying zoning of sixty thousand per dwelling unit. I said, baby steps, if Realty Resources has proposed amendments that you would like to share with me. I will review them and see what we can propose in the future. Support for these changes, I would, if you can. A lot, three lot subdivision in the RU one currently requires twenty one acres, that is overly burdensome from my perspective. Joe came back and said, I do support these changes. However, with the affordable housing so critically needed in Camden, I'd rather see time spent supporting that. Camden's current ordinances makes it impossible to build affordable workforce housing in our town. I've outlawed the changes, uh, I see as necessary to build affordable housing, I will try to find the affordable housing overlay zone we use in Massachusetts. He had since forwarded that to me. Those are the comments I received. That was, that's the email chain, for the, for the record.
I appreciate that and, and also I, 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 I do agree with Mark Jeremy that it was helpful to hear the entire exchange rather than the paraphrase. And I would encourage in the future, um, to, to continue that pro- that practice, even if it takes more time. Um, because there's a lot in there that, that, um, isn't caught by paraphrasing and is good, useful for the board to see. I also would encourage you to forward any of those emails to the board when you receive them.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't get that to you earlier. In a meeting on Morton and all day. I would say that, um, and I'm just providing comment because I think it's important, um, Deb Dodge had some questions. Um, they weren't po- comments that were specifically intended for the public hearing. Um, I responded to those comments and she said, thank you. Um, and she said, that was it, so.
Okay.
She had no other, provided no other comments, she thanked me for my thoughtful response. That was it, that's all I've received, and let me check online really quick too, on, on my emails. You can keep going Ethan, if you want.
Yeah, well, we're still on the public comment period, so at this point, we, we have to wait until we find out if we're done with public comment.
I got nothing.
Okay.
You want to treat Chris's comments as public or board comment?
I was actually going to treat them as board, um, but I, I think it's a fair question. Um, but I think as far as process goes, he's a board member who sat at the last meeting and just wants to give to the discussion, he's not voting. So I think I'm going to read it in at, at the board portion.
Do you want me to show it on the screen Ethan, or no?
Um, it's fine to show, but we're not there yet, I just want to make sure we're all done with public comments on all formats, all areas. And then go ahead and close the, the public comment period and then open up for board discussion. Um, and I want to allow, uh, anybody who has any questions who are sitting here. Uh, first to go as the, the conversation may be fresh and then we can read Chris's comments and.
I, I do have one more comment. This is coming off of YouTube, um, and this is a Jack Bauer. Um, I don't know where Jack Bauer, if that's his real name, or if he's a citizen of Camden or not. Um, this is coming in on YouTube and he's asking you to define cluster development. And so a cluster development, um, Jack is when you cluster the units into a certain area. Which reduces the overall develop, site development costs. Um, but it preserves the larger area as open space. Um, so rather than building out the same number of units over a very large area. What the intent of a cluster development or a planned group development in essence is to bring those. Bring those residential units closer together, cluster them in an area while you're preserving the area outside of that. Um, that's what a cluster development is, does that make sense, everyone? And I hope I answered Jack Bauer's comments, um. The best of my ability, that's what a cluster development is, does that make sense for everyone?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, so I think we are at the point where we can close the public comment period. And then, as I said, I want to get any board discussion, so I will run around the room such as it is. Um, and ask first if Mark, if you have any, uh, comment. Or discussion based on Jeremy's presentation or the public comment.
Well, I do. On the, uh. Uh, making this mandatory or optional issue. Yeah, that wasn't the initial proposal and, and we did add that at the last meeting and it was on my suggestion. I, I don't know if that's really does what we intended to do, it's. It may be wise just to leave it as mandatory.
Okay.
If we do do it as an optional. That can create, um, full subdivisions with sixty thousand square feet lots.
With no preserved open space.
Exactly.
Okay.
And I don't know if that's what we're, what, what we're really intending to do, I, I.
Perfect.
I think that was, that was brought up and I, I, I would suggest changing that.
Makes sense to me.
Yeah, I was going the same direction and can, I mean, maybe it's not, maybe it's, if, if Mark's already in favor. Can we talk, can you refresh my memory why that was discussed that way, I can't remember.
Maybe Andy can, he listened to it much recently.
Now you're on the spot, Andy.
Well, is this a test? Yeah, what, what I understood about that was, um, you know. You, you would have to fall back to the standards for, you know, that zone of sixty thousand square feet. And you could create as, a subdivision anyway, right? Is that correct?
Right, yeah, it is correct, and I think Mark, I mean, I think. I think, I mean, I got how I remembered it, it was more, it was more about, yeah, let's just like loosen this up a little bit. You know, um, and that's kind of how I took it, um. Well, we haven't, we haven't had any development and let, let's just, why not just make it optional? Um, and that's just, I, I think that's where it came from, um. Just about, I think once you guys heard what the requirements of this open space requirement was for any subdivision. I think you all just, you know, thought, yeah, well, that's crazy, let's, let's just make it optional. Um, but if we're getting down to the sixty thousand square feet anyway. And the intent is to preserve open space. And the natural character of town, why not leave it mandatory? Because then they have to, that lot sixty, sixty percent of it does need to be maintained as open space. Otherwise, otherwise you're only into building coverage. And that's the only limit that, that regulates any type of, you know, protections on that property would be. Or limits would be the building lot, building coverage on the lot, and other than that, that's all we have. So it does make sense, Mark, to go to mandatory, I, I.
Yeah, and I, I'm a little confused also as to what we decided last time, but I, I do remember that discussion. But, um, obviously it's optional if somebody wants to provide more land. Um, that's always, you know, we're providing a, a floor here where they, they have to meet a minimum lot size. Or a minimum, I'm sorry, uh. Number of open space, amount of open space, and so if they want to provide seven acres per lot, it can still do that. Um, and so, you know, that, that's sort of how I remember being, but again, I, I didn't review it like Andy did recently. Um, I am definitely in support of removing the optional requirement. Um, Andy, do you have anything to say on that besides the summary that you gave us so nicely?
Uh, no, I mean, I, I, I thought, you know, that it, the, um, amendments provided some benefits. Um, it provides folks the opportunities to, you know, reduce costs on a, on a cluster. With, on the utilities and the, uh, the roads, uh, to access those properties. While it, you know, meets the intent of Article nine by, uh, preserving sixty percent of open space, right? Which was the, the goal of that in the first place. Um, I, I have to admit, uh, you know, I had to read the zoning amendments, you know, three or four times. Listen to the discussion to get it clear in my head. So, um, you know, what, what I thought about was, well, it's going to be really hard for people to vote on this. And I, uh, think that it might be helpful to, um, do some. Um, you know, side by side comparisons of what, um, you know. Would be possible with this amendment versus what people could do, uh, just with a regular subdivision, right?
Yeah, and I think that's really important, Andy, uh, uh, it's, um, the, the. The downside to all of this is that there's a, there's this, this. Possible characterizing of the decision is, wow, the planning board is against open space. And clearly that's not what we're trying to do here, we're trying to strike a balance between, you know, the well intentioned open space. Um, ordinances of the past with the needs of the present. And so that, that, getting that out to the public and, and making sure that they understand. That this still is preserving sixty percent of the space, and as you said, a side by side comparison. I think perhaps one of the more notable changes is the reduction in, in frontage. Which really is an important part of this, this, uh, this whole thing. In allowing, um, more units without as much frontage. And, um, this is not an intent to get past any kind of, you know, spaghetti lot. I'm not sure if all of you are familiar with that term, but it's a, it's an age old term in real property, which is, um. You know, the drawing of lots that have just a minimal amount of frontage and then they spaghetti back and then they open up to a building lot. Um, that's not what we're talking about here, but we're talking about a reasonable amount of frontage. Um, but allowing for, uh, a more cluster development and, and again. Um, people who are in the know, I think, who work on affordable housing and sprawl, anti sprawl stuff. Um, re- recognize that cluster developments are really important as a, as a function. Um, both for affordable housing and just for development in general. And so I think, you know, it's important that we get on the record that, that we support this because it's good for the environment. Because it preserves open space and because it's good for the overall balance of housing available in Camden. Um, and so we're not against open space. Um, we're not, we're not trying to, uh, tear apart things that were done in the seventies or eighties. That we're supposed to provide all this open space and everything else, we're trying to make it feasible to do good projects. Um, with still preserving a lot of open space, so, um, the education part is really important.
Right.
I summed this up, that, uh, this open space zoning was, was created in two thousand and seven. And. Nothing has happened to the zone since then. So what we're trying to do is. Is create a more workable open space zone. Is basically what we're doing here, I think.
Exactly right.
That's well put.
The only, the only times it's been used since then would be in the village or the village extension where it's optional. Right? They, they, Cahill took advantage of that up on, off Cobro.
And Mark said in ten words what I took a thousand to say. So thanks for that. That's great. That's the board discussion. Anybody else on the board have anything further to add on this?
Can I ask, are you saying now that you're going to amend this and?
We are going to amend that one portion that, that changes mandatory to optional and, and remove that change.
What I wonder is if the other three board members who were in support of. This proposal. Would still support this. With that change.
Well.
Is that important?
There's, there's, there's two aspects to it. First of all, they're not voting today. And they're not here, but it is important to me personally, but I, I. My guess is that, that based on, I think this change was largely made at Mark's request. And then the discussion around that. And I think that the fact that Mark is in support of this. Changing it back to mandatory, I think would be accepted by most. I can't speak for them. But as far as whether it's important to them, Gene, I, you know, I honestly don't know the answer to that, but. We have who we have here today. I feel pretty comfortable moving forward.
I don't think any of them would have problems. Remember you have Chris's comments.
Chris would support, but you relied on the support of absent. Board members. To say that this was supported by the board. That's my point. So.
I, I.
Yeah.
I, I, I think the board vote is what.
Matters.
Here.
Yeah.
And, and yeah, and I, I do, I do want to take the opportunity to thank Gene for also for reminding me and Jeremy of Chris's comments. I do have some comments from Chris though. Since we're in the board discussion phase, I'm going to go ahead and read those into the record. Says to the chair and board members, I wanted to formally enter my support for the open space changes as we go forward. As a longtime resident of the rural parts of Camden, it's always concerned me that the current ordinance will lead to open sections. Be they field or forest being developed in ways that are opposite the intent of our ordinance. Mid on lot sizes lead to land being broken up into chunks with houses spread out just enough to waste the space and ruin the feel of the field. I think we have all seen the situation where a fifteen acre field is broken up and has six or seven. McMansions spread out through the field. Maintaining neither open space nor rural character. More importantly, adding flexibility to work on various cluster developments makes it more likely and easier to bring projects to town. Which will provide affordable and accessible housing opportunities. If we can rethink how larger parcels can be used. With shared septic and wells with redistributed, redistributed open space, I think we will see some exciting new projects come to town. Camden has a wonderful combination of a vibrant and charming urban town center with an equally charming and very special rural background. We can protect but allow. We can protect both, but allow alternative ideas so our town continues to grow. Chris wrote. And he doesn't speak specifically to the optional mandatory issue. But I, I do feel pretty confident that. That based on, again, you know, the language being brought in on Mark's proposal and then. Mark being in favor of removing it and everybody else here present. Also acknowledging that it, that removing it would be fine. I think I feel comfortable going forward. And hopefully. That's the end result that the, the board members would support this. At this point then, any more discussion, Mark, or what do you?
I have no further discussions now.
Okay. And Andy?
No more from me.
Okay, Jeremy, do you want to say something?
I'm just going to check my emails.
By having opened the public, but we're going to go for a second public real quick here anyway. So. I'm now opening up for public comment for the second portion. To see if there's any further public comment before I close that portion of the hearing. After which no further public comment will be permitted. I'll give Jeremy a minute to go through his several social media accounts.
I got no, no emails. Let's check. Checking YouTube here. Don't believe so. No more comments on YouTube or on my emails, none on my phone either. So we're good.
And none on the Zoom?
None, no, sir.
Okay. All right. I'm going to go ahead then and close the second public comment period. And bring it back into the board. For final discussion and vote. So is there any other further discussion by the board? At this point? Guessing no, since we just had a no from everybody. So I will now go ahead. And officially close the public hearing. Well, I need a motion for that, actually.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. I'll go around the room for roll call. Andy?
I.
Mark?
Yes.
And it's a yes for me. So that's three, nothing. The motion passes. The public hearing is now closed. And then I need a motion and a vote on whether to send. The motion and, or the, send the amendment forward to the select board for their consideration. But the recommendation that it be sent to the voters in June.
I'd like to make a motion to send this open space zoning. Amendment.
As revised.
With the revision of. Eliminating optional. To the select board. For their approval.
With the recommendation.
What, wow?
Yeah, with the recommendation that it be sent to the voters in June.
Oh.
November.
Oh, or November. Since June is passed.
With the recommendation it be sent to the voters in November.
Great.
I'll second that.
We have a second from Andy. We'll do again a roll call vote. All in favor, so I'm not all in favor. I'll go around. Andy?
Yes.
Yes, Mark?
Yes.
Yes, and that's a yes from me. So that's a unanimous vote from the members of the select or the. Planning board to send us on to the select board with a recommendation. That it be sent to the voters in November.
Perfect.
That concludes the hearing. Go ahead.
Thanks for making that, thanks for making that suggestion that we make it mandatory. I would say that one of the members, Rosanna, who was on the last time, she said, she did comment late to the public comment period on YouTube, the second one. That making it mandatory makes much more sense. So thank you.
Okay. Yep. And I think that's, I think that does make sense. And it also addresses the comments that we had. From Kristen. So that's the end of the meeting. All I need now is a motion to adjourn. It will beat the, it may beat the six P M deadline.
You may, just future meetings really quick.
Oh.
We do definitely have. It appears right now we've got nothing in the works for August nineteenth. So that may be a day off for you all. September ninth, we're looking at a minor subdivision application. And September twenty third would be the continued subdivision review on that one. That's small. Existing, no roads, nothing. This is on. Bayview, right? Bayview, way out Bayview. But outside of that, it's, it's a not much.
Okay. So it looks pretty light going forward, this, this in the immediate future.
Yep.
Okay. That sounds good. So now all we need is, Andy, you get to make another motion if you'd like to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right, and Mark, you get the second.
I'll second it.
All right, and I'm going to go around again. I guess all votes have to take a roll call. Andy?
Yes.
Mark? And that's a yes for me. Thanks, everybody. The meeting is adjourned and we'll either reconvene probably it looks like on September ninth.
Yeah, it's not six o'clock, Ethan.
We beat it.
Have a great Labor Day.
All right, take care.
Thanks.
Thanks, Mark.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye.